And wonder who these people are because they're right behind us. They can see into our kitchen. I totally understand why they want to do the vacation rental. I get that. I feel that there should be a way for them to be able to rent a business or their home where they can make money. But I feel that maybe that's not ready yet. How are they held accountable, especially if they're out of country? So now they're renting out their house. They're out of country and it's my problem if something goes wrong. I'm not making any money. Are my kids safe? Can they go play in the backyard? I don't know because I don't know who the people are. I'm opposed to this, not because I feel that they're going to do a bad job. I'm opposed to this because I don't know who is going to be behind me. And I don't know how long they're going to be living there. Like Kathy said, what if they sell her house in here? We're stuck with the rezoning. I don't want to move because I don't like the people behind me. I want to live in the house that I decided and chose. So that's why I oppose the vacation rental. Thank you.
Going up to the public for a second time on this rezoning application for vacation rental. Is there any comments from the public for a second time?
Let me introduce myself again. One more comment. This gentleman was speaking something about optic PV and raising property values and stuff. I'm just wondering, when there's vacation property in your neighborhood, what does that do to your property value? If somebody has a house in mind with another house 20 few blocks away from the vacation property, which house is he going to buy? Something that I've heard around property values. And if it's, if there's this many problems with vacation properties already, what is that going to do to the neighboring property values? That's my concern also.
Any comments or questions from council? Going up to the public for a third and final time. Is there any comments on this public hearing vacation rental for 1706 McKinnon Road? Third and final time for any comments on this public hearing. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing, Councilor Nixon, Councilor Orlando, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward for discussion purposes that zoning amendment by law 2152 be read a third time.
Motion by Councilor Nixon, seconded by Councilor Salz. Discussion. Councilor Nixon.
Your worship, I know this neighborhood really well. This is a longstanding residential neighborhood that funnels a lot of little children to go to high school. And I think this is one neighborhood that we should be moving around.
Councilor Rose.
I echo that. I think this is strictly a land use issue. We have to determine whether or not the zoning for this, the proposed zoning for this is good for this community and in particular this neighborhood. That's all we're really looking at. We're not looking at opportunities for people to make money or that kind of thing. It's strictly that. I think, as I've said before, as Councilor Nixon has said, it's important to maintain communities, existing communities, and not interfere with those communities to their detriment. And I see this as, again, as we're learning as we go along, it would be much better if the proposals that came forward for these types of communities, these neighborhoods, were secondary suites so that the owner was always there to monitor the situation and make sure there's no difficulty. I think in these situations where we're just giving an opportunity to somebody to rent out the whole house in such a neighborhood, there are some risks to the culture of the neighborhood. So I'm not going to support this.
Question to Mr. Strachan is, was this a vacation rental prior to this application? I just didn't hear any comments from the public on that. Yes?
The question that came up is how the property owner is responsible throughout the country. There's a requirement in the business licensing that Council adopted that requires that 24-hour number be provided so they would have to hire a property manager or some other individual. So it has to be somebody available 24 hours a day. And that phone number appears on their business license or contact.
Questions from council. Motion on the floor to approve in third reading. All those in favor? Against? Motion is denied. Moving into vacation rental zoning amendment by law 2153 for 1879 Corbin Place. I'm assuming that the hallways are cleaned out. Is there a meeting in the hallway? Here, she feels herself. Is anybody outside now? That's fine.
For Corbin? No. Everybody's in and we're in the last one.
The opening statement for conducting the public hearing is still standing. And we are now into zoning amendment by law 2153, which is 1879 Corbin Place. I want to ask the corporate officer to confirm that all due process has been followed according to the Local Government Act.
Yes, your worship. For 1879 Corbin Place, we have received nine letters of opposition. Eight in the margin, and one I received.
And it's an opposition role?
Yeah.
So I have a speaker's list available. And just like in previous public hearings, I will be going through the speaker's list and then going out to the public again three times for comments. So there'll be lots of opportunity for comments from the public. The first person on, oh, was, were we doing any presentation on this, Mr. Strachan? Sorry?
He's choking.
That's great. There's a little bit of that going around. Paul Parker, are you okay?
Yeah. Sorry, your worship. Very briefly, your worship, the zoning application is for vacation rental. The vacation rental has, I believe, two bedrooms. Thank you, your worship.
And the first person on the list is the applicant, Philip Garnell. That indicates that he wishes to speak.
Well, Philip Garnell, I reside at 511 Cedar Street. I'm the owner of 1879 Corbin Place. I've been the co-owner since 2009 with my ex-wife. It was as of a year and a half ago that I took over the rental property. I was forced into that because of bankruptcy. After renting the property for 155 years, I found it very costly and difficult to maintain as my tenants didn't communicate in kind of manners when there were issues. I found out afterwards from the community around that there were problems with the tenants that I had after the fact. I had invested in last month significant dollars in cleaning up home, painting, furnishing, and making it suitable for rental purposes. I have a background in hospitality where I worked on super yachts for many years. I know what it takes to maintain a property and ensure guests are catered to. I want to have a closer eye on my property. I've rented it in the past and had problems. It's costing a lot. So I thought that vacation rental would allow me to monitor things and maybe have better people stay there. I strictly comply with all the bylaw safety code. The maximum will be four hours, two per bedroom. There are two legal parking spaces. I will operate as a vacation rental no more than 120 days a calendar. I will receive management support from Rebelso Vacation Rentals. Both myself and Rebelso Vacation Rentals will be available for contact 24 hours a day if there are any issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking at the speaker's list, the first person that indicates that he wished to speak is Martinez Hopperman.
Your honor, welcome, councilors. In principle, this whole rental problem is a problem of controlling the renters. This same property, I'm staying right next to it. We have now for at least the past two, three winters, we have people there that is parking in the street. So we can't remove the snow blocking on the street. Fire brigade come, the police come, there's nobody can go in. There is nobody that I could talk to and say this to you, can you please check your renters? My wife has on numerous times phoned and they're still talking about this. Until 3 o'clock in the morning, people are parking. And I understand. If you're a renter, maybe you don't feel that worried about other people whether they want to sleep and work tomorrow morning. But this is what's happening in this rental unit. And whether you follow the rental or whether you follow the vacation rental, it is actually exactly the same thing. You couldn't even control the normal renters. My question is, how are we going to control the vacation rental? If I'm on vacation, man, I park it. I like to drive and drive around the room, all sorts of funny things because I'm on vacation. That's exactly what the vacation is. The problem is, I'm next to it and I need to sleep today to work tomorrow. And this is not what I am seeing right now. The biggest problem here is the parking. According to the document that I received from the city council, or from city, I'm sorry, I don't say council, but the council, is the impression is giving in these sketches that there is actually parking for four vehicles on that property. That is not true. There is parking for only two. That is exactly what has happened in the past with the renters in that property. They will come in and try to park four, five, six vehicles in the property. Then they can't try to park it in the property. They park it just in sleep. They just don't care. So this is the big issue there. And I've actually, in my letter that I've written, I've asked the question, how is council, if you do approve this, how are you going to enforce the law around parking? Because it wasn't enforcing in the past and I do not. I've got no feelings with the city. Law enforcement, but I don't want to phone people to enforce the law. I expect city to enforce the law, whether I phone them or not. That's not the issue. If I phone them, by the time I phone them, I already became the pick in the whole story. So this is my main concern, this parking. I don't really care who you're renting to. I'm honest with you. Whether you're renting to a normal renter or to a vacation renter, the parking laws need to be listened to. And if you cannot, if your owner cannot enforce the parking law, then surely you can't really come and stay yourself in the house and we can be good neighbors otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker on the list is, is it Emily Marie Hopperman?
1875 Corbin, right next door. Those are all the birdhouses. People, we've been there for 10 years. We had no problems with the previous owners who were staying next door with children. You can hear the children running up and down the stairs. That's not the kind of noise that is seen in this place. But those houses are like a cheap hotel. They are so close to one another. You hear everything. You hear the fights going on. And I think these houses are very suitable to older people or young couples starting. And now what we're going to start is a precedent, just like Aspen. Because we already know of people down the road who's renovating. They're coming in for their application soon. So because of these houses, we want to keep our community, like the other people said. We want it to be a quiet community, kids walking to street, to school. And I don't like to go knock on the neighbor's door 2 o'clock in the morning. Please, your music, duh, 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 I can't sleep. Really, there is this noise spiral. Or the car being started and idling for 40 minutes before 6 o'clock in the morning. I mean, that's a diesel truck. You know the noise. Right there. And I can go on and on and on. But the visitors, if those people are visitors, there's no space to park. So if they park right in front of our garage, then we have to go knock on the door. Please, I need to get out. They don't have any respect for the community.
Thank you. Next speaker on the list is Chris Robinson.
Oh, yeah, I'll take this. Sorry, I couldn't walk prepared. Hi, I'm Chris Robinson. I own 1880 Corbin Place. I'm here today to oppose this application for a reason. Main reasons kind of mirror the last two speakers of concerns with noise. As you can see, we have a one-year-old daughter, so getting a good night's rest is sometimes challenging already. And we've experienced problems of noise from this particular property before. So they've been outside drinking, talking loudly. And they're confident that people who are here for a good time and not a long time will present us with the same issues. For those of you that aren't familiar with how these buildings are constructed, we've got two-by-four studded wall with thermal insulation, very little noise-canceling value inside it, and that's it. So the noise goes straight through. To, on top of that, we're basically living on top of each other. So it is a real huge noise. We've touched on the parking as well. The applicant did mention that he would actually have it as a little secret, but the application does not mirror that. They even had before in these applications, so I'm sure let's just do this frequency. That being an issue particularly in the winter, if the contractor's not able to clear the road properly, then emergency services are not able to access 13 hogs, which are upstream in that cold set. So my last reason is that it's not an owner-present vacation rental. So by the time we're working up and we have to call, it's already too late. Our evening of sleep, ready to go to work, has been disrupted. So all year long, I begin work at 7:00 a.m. And it's important that I'm rested. So as you can see, it's not really fair that we wear the disruption of vacation renters who do not respect their surroundings in order for the applicant to profit. It seems apparent that he's not really interested in the state of the community and in the state of his finances. We have had two vacation rentals illegal in the area that I know of. And anecdotally, they have been bad in, so who's to say that this one will be different? So, oh, so in closing, I have right here 28 signatures from neighbors in the area within earshot, so within that 100 meters, who oppose this vacation rental zoning violation. Does the council like to help us?
Yes, I'm sure.
I sent a sample of that letter in. So basically, we've gotten off almost every door that would open for us. And the overwhelming majority are saying that they don't want a precedent to be set for starters or this particular one to go through.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Emily, did you want to come up and speak?
I do. Many of the points have already been said, but I would like to lead.
Absolutely. Floor is yours.
Thank you.
My name is Emily Smith, and I live at 1875 Corbin Place, directly across from the property subject to the job and deserving change application. I have no denying, having been proud owners of our properties since July 2015, and am currently raising our one-year-old daughter. I'm not in favor of living across from a commercial owner absent vacation rental. When purchasing our home, we made a conscious decision to buy a family-oriented neighborhood, one where we'd know our neighbors and we could be sure their values align with ours. We live in what is classified as a medium-density area. This classification has not taken into account how these homes were constructed. They do not meet current building codes, having two-by-four walls, no plywood between the studs inside and four insulation. These factors contribute to the noise level we hear inside the house on a regular basis. And with the vacation rental meters in the bedroom, I guarantee it will only be worse. When we moved into our house, tenants already occupied the property in question. During the year we were neighbors with them, we had multiple issues with this property. We were really woken countless times during the night from them smoking, drinking loudly, conversing all hours of the night, multiple times a week. On several occasions, I'd go out to the street to tell them to quieten. In the spring of 2015, after living across from these tenants for about eight months, I went to the city to ask for the owner's information. They only gave me names and I was not able to contact the owners. I even tried searching them up on Facebook. But I wasn't able to contact them. And I'm really thankful that the owner, or that the tenants moved in in the summer or I know we're still having issues with this property. So turning this property into a vacation rental will only increase the number of times we look and go to the alleys. Dividing 24/7 contact information for Philip and David Garnell is not enough. By the time I need to contact them, my sleep has already been disturbed. I have already gotten up and could have easily told the renters to quieten myself. This is not adequate for a quiet, family-oriented neighborhood. Parking is a huge issue. There is no way there are four parking spaces, as stated in the outline. At best, three, providing there are small cars and one parks parallel to the street. With the amount of snow and snow gas, the frequency with which our street is cleared and simply trying to back out of our own driveway, there is no way four vehicles will fit. Not only will they not fit, there's more vehicles than is allowed under the bylaw, one vehicle per bedroom. This house has two bedrooms plus an office, potentially three vehicles total. Over the bylaws also state that there are only allowed two parking spaces in front yard of a vacation rental home. Having no street parking and no back alleys in the area, that might be quite hard to believe that there could be four parking spaces. Vacation rentals in residential areas are negative. Tenants have no interest in the welfare of our community. They do not volunteer, keep an eye on an elderly neighbor, or invest in our community's future. When people come for the weekend, they do not shop for local businesses. They are here today and gone tomorrow without engaging in any activities that strengthen the community. Since the rental will only be operational for 120 days per year, that means that for 245 days of the year, it sits empty. That also means that no one is contributing to the community from that property. No volunteers, no community leaders, no one supporting our local businesses. I was reading of some examples and some other issues in North America with vacation rentals. So Flathead Valley in Montana recently went through a vacation rental crisis themselves. One of their great concerns was that having residential areas littered with vacation rentals would drive up the cost of affordable housing and long-term rental options. In Rebelso, there is currently a shortage of affordable houses on the market. And Upper Columbia Park has just been the only houses in town that first-time homebuyers could possibly consider affording. By turning residential places like this into vacation rentals, it drives up the housing costs and the once affordable houses for young families are no longer available at affordable price. Rebelso has a number of homes on commercially zoned property as well as land available in such buildings that would be much better suited for vacation rentals. If there is indeed a tourist market that is specifically looking for vacation home rentals, then it is not unreasonable to expect that we find in the areas of the city where little conflict with local residents is likely to occur. Rebelso has at least 15 hotels with more infrastructure and even more bed and breakfasts where vacationers are welcome to stay and will not be a nuisance to Rebelso residents. There is no upside of having activity beside the homes with permanent full-time residents. I believe city council needs to prioritize the interests of local residents and not allow this degradation of our neighborhood that benefits only the non-resident owners. Thank you.
I just want to speak at the podium. The floor is open for any public comments.
Hi there. My name is Izzy Lynch, and I'm Philip's partner. First of all, I'd like to clarify that the application was actually meant to be for two parking spaces. I don't know if there's a discrepancy, but initially we thought we could do four spaces. And then after talking to Nikki, going and measuring the spaces, we decided to apply for just two spaces and two bedrooms. We really want to do this legally, and that's why I work here. We acquired this home under very unusual circumstances. And when it came into Phil's, came under his responsibility, there were renters in it. We didn't at the time have a choice as to who lived there. We also never actually received any formal complaints from the city or anyone about these renters. And I apologize that we were hard to get a hold of. We didn't know that they were not giving you our information. So when we acquired the house, it was not in great shape, which affected the kind of people and the number of people that would live there. We tried, we had tenants move out within the first couple of months of owning it or of being responsible for it. And we tried to get a family in there or kind of more responsible people, but it just wasn't, it just wasn't that kind of house. It was kind of set up in the shape of a bit of a ski bum household, I guess. We interviewed our tenants. We got references from very reliable people in town. And we thought we were putting good people in there. Again, we had no idea that there were these issues until people moved out. So when we acquired the house, it was not in great shape, but we were not in a financial situation to fix it up or take the time out of getting the rental income as we were building our own home up on Seating Hill. We've both lived here for close to 10 years. We are members of this community and we really care about this community. We decided this fall was finally time to protect our investment. And we took a month, we took the month to invest in it. Phil took a month off work, cleaned it up, made it look suitable for getting people in there. We have friends and family in that area, and we do care about that neighborhood. We have friends and they have kids, and we don't want any disruption there. And we really see this as an opportunity to become good neighbors. We see it as an opportunity to monitor the property, to be in there on a weekly basis when people are coming in and out, to be more present with the neighborhood and be able to check in with the people in the neighborhood. As you can see, we're starting family ourselves. We care about community. We care about families. We care about Rebelso being a good place to live. And we want to do this properly and legally, and so that's over here.
Floor is open. If anybody would like to, from the public, would like to speak to this zoning amendment by law for vacation rental at Corbin Place, going up to the public for a second time. Is there any comments from council? Going up to the public for a third and final time for comments on this public hearing for vacation rental at Corbin Place. Looking for a motion to close the public hearing, Councilor Nixon, Councilor Orlando, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward for discussion purposes that zoning amendment by law 2153 be read a third time.
Motion by Councilor Nixon, seconded by Councilor Salz. Councilor Nixon.
Your worship, I count support for this one. I look at this whole neighborhood as being a good place for seniors to live or that are downsizing, or young families that are starting out. I commend the young couple for cleaning up at home and getting it ready to re-rent to a young family or to a single mom with kids. This is not a place I want to see become a vacation zone. When these homes are built so close together, we're hearing complaints from Aspen and Prescott. Those are big homes with lots of property in between them. And they're having issues with noise and debris. And if you have those issues in a neighborhood where everybody's close together, it's like in a trade court. Like, they're very close, and I don't support this move at this time. it's like in a trade court, like they're very close and I don't support this moving forward at this time.
I guess a couple of comments that I would like to make is that I feel bad for the neighborhood and also for the owners that they've had a bad experience with previous tenants. I know what that's like because I've gone through that before. But it's more than that, especially in this neighborhood when you have what I would call very high density. I know it's probably classed as medium density, but it's very high density and very narrow streets and there isn't a lot of parking. And I understand, I know that a two-bedroom only needs two off-street parking stalls and it looks like that they can handle that. But when you have so many houses that are so close together and in such a small area, and I just don't think that it's conducive to vacation rental. And unfortunately, I cannot support this one moving forward. Any other comments from council? Counselor Salz.
Your worship, with the parking and the type of housing in the neighborhood, it's very much suited to younger people getting started. I'd like to see it remain that way. I do feel bad that they've had a bad experience with renters, but going forward, it's always hard to know whose of the nature who isn't, whether it's vacation rental or a long-term rental. In light of the parking, in light of the proximity of the houses, I will not support this going forward.
Is there any more discussion on this motion? Motion is to approve in third reading. All those in favor? Against? Motion is denied. And we're moving into our last public hearing and the public hearing is for... Yes. Don, you want to let Colin get Colin again? And we're moving into zoning and... We're going to be starting our next public hearing in about one minute. Of course, everybody is welcome to stay. If you don't wish to stay for the next public hearing, you are welcome to.
Thank you for coming.
We're moving into zoning amendment by law two-one-five-five, which is vacation rental on four-one-four Moss Street. The opening statement for ducking public hearing is still valid. And I'd like the corporate officer to confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Yes, your worship. In your package, you have two submissions that are not opposing this application but have concerns for four-one-four Moss Street. I received four letters of support afternoon and one letter in opposition.
And I do have a speaker's list set up. There's a few people that have mentioned that they are willing to speak to this. Again, I will be going out to the public a minimum of three times for comments. And I'd like to ask Mr. Strachan if he has a presentation for us.
Your worship, the subject vacation rental is a full-size vacation rental. That's very accurate, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Strachan. First person that is on the list that has mentioned, commented they wish to speak is the applicant, Simon Wex. Mr. Wex, you have the podium, sir.
Hello, your worship and councilors. There's one discrepancy. It's actually for three bedrooms, not four, which is relevant when it comes to parking. I'm Simon Wex, the owner with my wife of four-one-four Moss Street and applicant for this re-ownment. There's a benefit for Rebelstoke to legal and compliant vacation rentals and I hope you support this application for what is an ideal rental. We first moved to Moss Street in two thousand and eight. We were later related when we got the opportunity to purchase our home also on Moss Street three years ago. This is our primary residence and rental activities will fall well, well below the hundred and twenty days per year. We live in this house alone and our rent in this property does not displace any renters. We are very particularly selecting guests based on previous reviews on the site we use, Airbnb, because this is actually our home after all, so that's very important for us. We have sufficient parking, which something I'll talk about a bit more. And we offer something unique to middle-class families traveling to Rebelstoke, where hotels are just not an economical option. Having three bedrooms means a family of six or five or whatever can stay in a home where they have access to a kitchen where they otherwise wouldn't in a hotel. And we only rent a minimum of four days because, quite frankly, it's a pain for us to move out, to take advantage of this income. And when we do, we stay across the street. Ms. Lowe has four letters in support of our application, three of which are very, very close. One is directly across the street, one is directly diagonal, and one is two doors down. And when the letters went out within a hundred-meter radius, which went to a significant number of houses, it was actually kind of daunting. I went and knocked on doors of the neighborhood within a hundred meters and spoke to around twenty owners of those properties who answered the door just to understand what their concerns were. And so the main concern which I heard was parking. And so we're social people and we often have visitors ourselves. Parking is sometimes an issue for friends of us staying over. But it was clear that in order for this to operate as a vacation rental successfully, we had to do something about that. And so we have three vehicles and we've secured parking for those three vehicles when we rent this out. They easily fit within the policy in our driveway and I think it won't be an issue going forward. Curious to hear if council has any questions or, your worship.
Mr. Strachan.
Your worship, there's a fourth, which of the three bedrooms are proposed? Is it just the main floor?
Just the main floor, yes.
So the fourth bedroom, your worship, is the city of package, is the basement that they're indicating out. They are applying to a lifting app.
We're not doing rent.
Okay. I'll be asking council, anytime council has a question, they all need to just put their hand up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Going on to the speaker's list. Next person I know, if they wish to speak, is Shane Cowie.
Your worship, he has a meeting. He got called to work. He did submit a letter in opposition and his biggest concern was respect to parking.
The floor is open to the public for any comments on this vacation rental public hearing for four-one-four Moss Street. Floor is open for comments from the public. Counselor Orlando, you have a question?
Yeah, just clarification from staff. There are two letters in the PDF package and then three in support that were late and one in opposition. Is that correct?
No, they weren't late. They can submit right after the end of the public hearing. So four came in after publication in support of. Two that were in the package were not against. They just have a couple of concerns with respect to parking. And then the last one from Shane Cowie who met to the end of work is in opposition, so one in opposition.
And the reason that he's in opposition, if I remember where you mentioned, is because of parking?
Yes.
Floor is open for comments from the public for a second time. Four-one-four Moss Street, vacation rental. Any comments or questions from council? Going back to the public for a third and final time, are there any comments from the public? Looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Counselor Nixon, Counselor Orlando, all those in favor, motion is carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward that zoning amendment by law twenty-one fifty-five, be read a third time.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. Counselor Nixon.
Just, your worship, I'm going to support this one going forward. I heard the right words, that they went around and talked to their neighborhood, worked on the parking issue. There are two houses off an arterial collector room heading to the steel. And I think this is worth supporting going forward.
Any other comments from council? I'm not going to say anything because you basically have made all the comments that I was going to make. Looking for any comments from council. Motion is to approve in third reading. The zoning amendment by law. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward that zoning amendment by law twenty-one fifty-five, be adopted.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor Salz. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor, motion is carried. That ends all of our public hearings and we're going to take a three or four-minute break and then get back.